Okay, we are live.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Exeter Township Board Voting Meeting for August. I want to welcome those folks who are joining us, whether they're joining on Zoom or through our live streaming. This evening, we are be going to be pursuing an agenda that will be using the consent agenda format. So for our board members present this evening, just about all the items on the agenda that you'll see were were subject to our conversations and review during our workshop meeting a couple of weeks ago. So before we start the meeting, I would like our Board Secretary Anne Gaddish to go through roll call. Anne?
Mr. Aaron's.
Preston.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Anne Herring.
Here.
Dave Hamburger.
Here.
Michael Japina.
Here.
Sharon McLendon.
Here.
Curry Mueller.
Here.
Michelle Stratton.
Here.
Alison Wilson.
Here.
While present.
Thanks, Anne. This evening, we also have an agenda that includes public comment section. And as part of the public comment, what we would do would be provide the opportunity for folks to submit their their questions or their comments directly. And I'm going to ask Joe Way, our IT supervisor, to kind of review the process for folks who might want to submit a question to the board or comment.
Hey, Dr. Hamburger. This evening, Joe and I will be listening. We will be following the email of questions at myexeter.org. So if you have a question or comment you'd like to be read during the public comment section, please send an email including your name and address to questions@myexeter.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Way. So following our agenda, we're at item two. And item two is superintendent's report, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Kim Minor. Dr. Minor.
Good evening. Is my my voice clear right now?
Seems to be.
Good, thank you. Thank you. This evening, I am very pleased to share with the board that tomorrow our teachers come back and we really mark that as the beginning of the school year. We're very excited to welcome them all back. And as you know, students come following week. We have been preparing extensively, and I want to share with board that I'm extremely proud of our entire team. The preparations have been extensive and our professional development lineup for the next few days is really top notch. On tonight's agenda, we have a few personnel items that are of particular note. We have the ETEA teacher's contract. I'd like to extend my thanks to the members of the board as well as the leadership of ETEA in terms of working diligently to come up with that agreement so that we can begin the school year with the teacher's contract. And I look forward to that vote this evening. We also, as you know, have an item that involves furloughing members of our support staff on the agenda this evening. The pandemic has created a huge number of very difficult votes and decisions for our district and for districts throughout the country. And certainly, this item this evening represents one of the most difficult for anybody to face, which is, you know, people potentially being put out of work as a result of the pandemic. I have received a number of questions, and I would just like to provide clarity at the beginning of the meeting that this is not a referendum on the value of these positions, and it is certainly not a referendum on the value of the employees. The question before the board is related to the duty that I have and that the central office administrators have to inform the board when funds that are generated by our taxpayers may not be used in the way that they're intended. So it was our obligation to review all of our employees who get their benefits and salary through taxpayer funds during the period of virtual learning and ensure that all of them could provide for the district meaningful work that would earn that taxpayer-generated salary and those benefits. And we spent a great deal of time and gave a great deal of consideration to that and determined that there were 90 employees who we were not able to provide with meaningful work during the period of virtual learning. And so the question before the board tonight is simply stated as this board wished to use taxpayer-generated funds to pay benefits and salary to people who are not able to perform meaningful work. And I think what the difficulties there is, of course, so many of those people live in our community, and we recognize the hardship that is incurred. But I just wanted to provide clarity that this is not intended to be a cost-saving measure. And again, it's not a referendum on the positions or the people. It is simply a question of what is our obligation to our taxpayers related to meaningful work of employees? And just as another point of clarity, during the spring closure that was mandated by the state, the legislature passed Act 13, which required all districts to pay employees at the same level that they had been paid as of March 13th through July 1. And so there is no such legislation at this point in time. So thank you for allowing me to put some clarity around those issues. Again, I want to extend my excitement to start our school year in terms of our students, our families and our teachers and our staff. I expect that although it'll be a very challenging year, it will be an outstanding school year, and I'm very much looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. My understanding is first first day for teachers is tomorrow.
That's correct.
Yeah. Great. Okay, we're going to move on into our agenda and item three is public comments. This is an opportunity for folks in the community to make a comment to the board regarding items on the agenda or anything else that might be relevant to, you know, our school district. And we have a process that we've described for submitting these online. A reminder that folks really need to provide their their name and their address when they submit a public comment. So Joe Way, would you let us know, do we have any public comments to review?
Other than that first question we were just talking about, we do not have any additional questions.
We haven't received any additional questions. Okay. We'll move on to the agenda.
Could I just say something? I'm sorry, Dr. Hamburger. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was reading through social media today, and there's just so much misinformation out there. And I know we only have about 140 people watching right now, but I would encourage you that if you have questions or you have concerns, to please reach out to the administration, reach out to principals, you can even start now reaching out to teachers to get your information. I just think that's going to be the best, most reliable way for you to get the information that you need. So I just wanted to share that.
Might also say too that there's information on our website that is updated regularly when necessary that should be accessed as well.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. Okay, unless there are any additional comments, we'll we'll move into the agenda. And the first item on the agenda is minutes. A reminder that this is a consent agenda. So I would ask board members, if if you have an item that you would like to have pulled for individual consideration, please, please say that in advance of the of the of the vote, and we'll pull that particular item, particularly when items are grouped for the benefit of a collective vote. So first item on the agenda is minutes. It's recommended the Board of Directors approve the minutes from July of 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Treasurer's report. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the treasurer's report for July as well as payments July 22nd through August 18th.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. When I move into board policy, we've got essentially three sections here that I'd like to to go through maybe somewhat separately. The first one, two, three, four, five, six items on the agenda are items that are up for second reading. These have been subject to a first reading, 30-day review. And now a second reading is the final opportunity for us to to approve these 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 policies. So unless there's any 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 objection, I'm going to recommend that we take that first group of policies, one, policy 150 through policy 239 on the agenda. And I make a motion that we approve them at this time.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. The next two policies are in bold in your in your agenda. Policy 103, which is a Title IX sexual harassment policy affecting students and policy 104, which is a Title IX sexual harassment policy affecting staff. And I'm going to turn this over to Dawn Harris, our People Services Director, and Christine Willen, our HR Director, to kind of, because we didn't have an opportunity to review this at our workshop session, to maybe just say a few things about the importance of these two policies and why they're subject for review and approval for first reading this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. So policies 103 and 104 are a result of Title IX regulations being revised back in May. There's a pretty tight turnaround in terms of PSVA putting together policies for that in order to be in compliance with a piece of those regulations that required these things to be in place in August. So we received the policies and had a little bit of time to review them and then get them on this agenda for first reading. I, in looking back on your agendas from back in the spring, it looks like you had a policy 103 and 104 that may have already been in the cycle of review. These policies would replace those that were in that cycle of review. Christine and Ellis worked together on these policies. They actually did a training for us two Mondays ago on the changes to Title IX, and I'll let Christine talk a little bit about a summary of those changes.
Sure. First of all, for those of you that aren't that familiar with the Title IX regulations, let me just tell you what they are. Basically, they are enforced by the Office for Civil Rights, and there are policies that are they are instilled upon school districts or any organization that accepts help with federal funding and federal financing. And it prohibits these organizations from allowing any type of sexual discrimination or sexual harassment in the workplace, in our education programs, and also in our athletic programs. The Exeter Township School District, we are very committed to providing an environment that's free from any type of, not just sexual harassment or discrimination, but any type of bullying or harassment and discrimination. So the Title IX Coordinator is designated district official with primary responsibility for coordinating the district compliance with Title IX. And my backup will be Dawn Harris, our Director of People's Services, in the event that I am ever out of the office for any length of time. The new regulations have narrowed the standards of a claim to be considered sexual harassment or discrimination. In the past, it was more broad in nature, but now there's specific criteria that must be met for claims to be considered sexual harassment or sexual discrimination. The new regulations also establish established standards that schools must adhere to in receiving complaints, investigating, rendering decisions concerning allegations of sexual harassment. So there's a more formal process in place, which you will see when you review the policies. There are specific forms to be completed with deadlines and timeframes. Also, we had, as Dawn had said, we did, one of the requirements on our website is to have my contact information along with the training that us investigators and decision makers received from Ellis Katz on August the 10th. So you will see that training also listed under the Title IX section on our website. And after these policies are reviewed and approved, they will also be listed on our website as well. And another area of change with the new regulations is the new regulations, they are looking for more supportive measures to settle these claims, and previously it was more punitive measures. So the supportive measures could entail like counseling or possibly rescheduling classes or work schedules, more security measures, allowing somebody an escort. Those are the type of supportive measures that they'd like to see in place. And also, the burden of proving or disapproving an allegation of harassment will rest with the school, where previously it was the complainant or the accused harasser. So that's pretty much an explanation of the these policies.
I'm sorry, could you say who the burden of proof was on again?
Okay, the burden of proving or disproving an allegation of harassment will rest with.
I lost you.
Oh.
You missed that last word.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike, it will rest with the school district, the burden of proof.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions regarding these two policies? Okay, it's recommended the Board of Directors approve for first reading policies 103 and 104.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. And then we, the last section of policies are for first reading. These have been reviewed at our workshop meeting a couple of weeks ago. Policies listed in the agenda, policies 222 through 707, recommended for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. We will move to item seven in our agenda, business functions. Mr. Aaron's.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following business functions, items one, two, and three.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Aaron's. Personnel Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, I'm going to chop this up a little bit. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel item, one, two, three, eight, nine, 10.
Second. I had to count there.
Yeah. You have to look at it. Any, any discussion?
Excuse me, I have lost my access to board docs. I do need to abstain from a personnel action regarding FMLA.
I know, that's number four. I pulled it out already.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll just go one, one is resignations, two is retirements, three is appointments. And then eight is an increase in the Recording Secretary stipend from $108 to 111. It's also nine is course requests and 10 is staff conferences. So those are the ones we're doing right now.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel item. Number four, leaves of absence.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain conflict.
Conflict of interest?
Yes.
Okay. Mike, can I just make one point on that? And this is a point of information for all board members, too. We've had a policy change. And there is a requirement now to, I think, submit in writing when when you are abstaining related to anything that might apply to the Ethics Act. And I think conflict of interest would do that. So in our policy, under, I think it's policy 006, Mike, there is an attachment that should be submitted, I think, associated with an abstention. Other abstentions, it's not required, but any abstention that's related to the Ethics Act now requires, you know, that particular submission. Mr. Katz, am I correct in that? Am I, have I stated that correctly?
Yes, you have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion carries. We can move on to the next item.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number five, the Confidential Secretary's Compensation Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I think it's eight, one. Next item?
Yep. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number six, the collective bargaining agreement between the Exeter Township School District and the Exeter Township Education Association for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just want to quickly echo some of the comments that Dr. Minor made at the outset of the meeting in recognizing that this is a really important piece to have in in place for a harmonious relationship with our Teachers Association at the beginning of the school year. And I just want to say thank you to them for the process that it took to get here. And, you know, I think that there were some words exchanged at the end of the bargaining process about how this is going to be an opportunity to set a strong working relationship between the association and the district administration and the board. And I certainly believe in that, and I think that this is a great step in that direction.
Agreed.
Dave, can I say something?
Please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Right, I just want to start off by saying I truly believe our teachers deserve a raise. My opinion and my vote's not a reflection of my lack of support for the teachers. My concern is the financial burden that's been placed on our community this year. We raised taxes, we have businesses in Exeter closing, we have unemployment rate that in June of last year was 4.4%, but this June was 13.1%. Those on unemployment are possibly going to lose their $600 federal unemployment benefit. And on top of this, we tell Exeter families that have a household with all working parents that they have to pay for daycare because we're not opening our brick and mortar. I can't turn around and tell those same people in my community that they'll have, that will be giving raises to our teachers. I'm very uncomfortable with that. Again, do I feel our teachers deserve a raise? Yes, absolutely. Do I feel this is the time for that? No, I don't. I don't believe it's appropriate to present this to people of our community, and that's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I just want to comment quick. You know, Anne, I think that you speak to, you know, a common concern that we all have, and I certainly don't think that that's lost on any of us. And, you know, I think that if we were able to control the outcome 100%, that that would probably be closer to where it would heal, because we recognize that a lot of people in the community are hurting. There are a lot of people who are unemployed. But I believe that the reality is that if we didn't have a bargaining agreement with our association, there would be tremendous uncertainty whether we are in a brick and mortar situation or whether we're in virtual like we are now. Beyond that, it would cause tremendous stress, I think, to our educational community to have labor disagreement with management and with the board. And beyond that, the system in Pennsylvania between collective bargaining units and their public agencies is one that does not, I think, accord some of the outcomes that you're talking about. And I really think that this was a good agreement. You know, obviously, we could have gotten a better one in our own eyes, and I think the association could have gotten a better one in their own eyes. But we went through the process of negotiations, we worked hard at it, and we were fortunate to get a good product that, in any other circumstance, would be seen as a tremendous compromise for both of us. And I think that unfortunately, the times are not reflective of that feeling, but they are reflective, I think, of the reality that public school districts are in, that these types of agreements need to be signed if we expect that our teachers will be there to teach. So I understand where you're coming from. I just, I just disagree in the outcomes that you're talking about.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
We have one no. Any abstentions? The motion carries eight, one. Thank you.
It is, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel item, the Support Staff Furlough Resolution. And I will read that. Whereas, the World Health Organization has declared the current outbreak of COVID-19 a general pandemic. And whereas, the Pennsylvania Department of Education has determined that the COVID-19 pandemic constitutes an emergency. And whereas, the Board of School Directors has determined that the risks COVID-19 presents to our students, faculty and community requires an extraordinary response. And whereas, that response requires that the school year commence with instruction occurring completely remotely. And whereas, as a result, a reduction in force must occur as a number of positions within the district are not necessary as the responsibilities of those positions assume in-person instruction. Now, therefore, the Board of School Directors, number one, concludes that the following positions are no longer required for the period that remote instruction is taking place. Thirteen cafeteria aides, one computer aide, one health aide, two in-school suspension, fourteen learning support aides, one library aide, two math aides, two paraprofessionals for special education, seven reading aides, twenty-six instruction, regular instructional aides, one school safety assistant, two 12-month secretaries, two 188-day secretaries, three 211-day secretaries, one transportation mechanic helper, seven transportation van drivers, five transportation bus aides. Number two, authorizes the superintendent to notify the employees who will be laid off as a result of this reduction in force and as a result of the bumping that may occur under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement applicable to the above referenced positions. Number three, expresses its intent to recall the affected employees once the district returns to either a hybrid instruction model or a fully in-person instruction model, with the understanding that once the district does return to a fully in-person instruction model, all the furloughed employees will be recalled. Number four, designates as required by the applicable collective bargaining agreement, September 17th, 2020, as the effective date of furlough for all employees who are impacted by this reduction in force, whether the employee is furloughed as a result of this resolution or furloughed as a result of the subsequent bumping process.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Hamburger, may I ask Mr. Katz to explain what bumping means? Dr. Hamburger, may I ask Mr. Katz to explain what bumping means?
Sure, under terms of the support staff collective bargaining agreement. The furlough process must take place via seniority. Additionally, the collective bargaining agreement calls for the right of somebody who is about to be furloughed. To bumped into another position held in another classification by somebody. Who may have less seniority than that individual, provided that that individual possesses the skill and ability to perform the duties of that other job. And that's the bumping process, that process whereby they can move into another position held by somebody with less seniority, provided they can, they have the skill and ability to perform those duties.
Thank you.
And is that, and is that outlined in the collective bargaining agreement from the support staff?
Yes, it is. Specifically said.
Okay. I have a question about, and this may be for Dawn Harris. If you could clarify the difference between a learning support aide and a paraprofessional for special education?
So they're basically just different assignments within the district, within the special education realm. I'm not sure how they are coded when everyone is hired, but those are both effectively special education paraprofessional positions.
If a person is working in special education and they're not working in learning support, might they be considered a paraprofessional?
There's, there's, there's several different classifications in the, in the sheet that we looked at. There are folks who are classified as special ed aides who are also classified as learning support aides. So there's a lot of different definitions of that, but for the purposes of this, I can say that these particular positions. Are learning support positions for the most part.
And if a person is a paraprofessional, special education person, do they know that that's their, I mean, is it, is it role different anyway? Or is it, it's just?
I think it's more of an HR thing is, is what I'm trying to explain, it's not a difference, they're all special education paraprofessionals.
And their job, their job description would be identical, in other words.
The ones that, the ones that have some distinction are ones that are labeled PCAs or personal care assistants, and they have distinction. Because those are the ones that we do MA billing or medical access billing for their services for or through the state.
And they're not included in this list of furlows?
No, we didn't include any of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Fidler.
I guess this is for Dr. Minor or whoever would, she might delegate. How confident are you that the remaining aides and other personnel will be able to fully meet the educational needs of all of our students?
Mr. Fidler, I, can, are, can you clarify your question for me? Are you asking about my, my general confidence in our ability to meet the needs of students given the furlows?
Yes, I mean, I know, reading the list, there are still some aides. Who are, who are going to be maintained, is that correct? Am I reading?
That is correct, there are actually very many support personnel upwards of 200 that are being maintained. Throughout the district in a variety of categories, the bulk of which are special education aides. So we are, we're very confident in our ability to meet the needs of the students with the support staff personnel. That we are maintaining. And if for any reason we determine that we were having difficulty meeting a need, or if we would have a new student with unique needs move in. Then we would, you know, recall staff to meet those needs.
Okay, that was actually part two of my question, but you, you've already answered, so you've got. A plan in place if a parent or a student or teacher comes forward and says, we, we need help here with a student or two.
Correct, our special education department, you know, led by Mrs. Harris would evaluate, there would be an IEP meeting as needed to determine. What needs weren't being met and what the appropriate support would be, they may be in the form of additional teacher time or modification to the student's learning plan. But if in any event, it was required that we had an additional aide to provide support, then we would. Live, recall provisions and, you know, obtain an additional aide service.
Okay, thank you very much.
I was just going to say that this, kind of piggybacking on that, John. That this is a hard decision, especially personally knowing so many of the people that it's affecting. But, you know, I did ask that question this morning, and the answer Dr. Winters gave me was that there are 206 support staff. Still out there, still going to be there to support our students. And that the 90, you know, are just positions that we are, there's roles that we just can't, wouldn't be fulfilled. And I just, you know, feel we can't, you know, justify compensation if there's not roles to be filled, so. Unfortunately, this is another consequence of this pandemic that we have right now.
Hi.
I have a question. Is HR and our, our team going to assist the, these particular professionals? On how to maybe collect unemployment for this? I mean, are we going to provide any type of assistance in terms of making sure that they're, they're, they're signed up for it?
So, Mr. Miller will be notifying the affected employees of the furlough. They'll be notified tomorrow as well as, you know, assuming the board approves it. They'll be notified of their COBRA rights, which are their ability to maintain benefits by, you know, paying for those benefits. As well as the bumping provisions. And then the head of the support staff union did reach out to Ms. Willen and I today. A service that we might be able to provide, and I anticipate that we will be, that would do exactly what you described, which is help affected staff members. Utilize unemployment and other services that might be available to them during this time, so it is our intention to be as supportive as we possibly can.
And, and I guess depending on the position, they actually may, might make more unemployment than?
It's conceivable if the, if the federal government or the state government does in fact. Continue or, you know, I guess re-implement the additional money that they had put forward in the spring for unemployment. So there was an additional $600 that was being provided to people on unemployment right now. I know both the Congress and the White House have proposed additional unemployment compensation, but at the best of my knowledge, neither of those have been approved.
Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks, Mrs. Wilson, are there any other items in your section?
Nope, you covered them all.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to student functions, Mrs. Stratton.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following student function items, number one through six.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say something quickly regarding the dress code. I really appreciate, and this is not very important right now with us not going back into schools and having school virtually, but. I saw that the principals all worked together regarding the dress code, and I really appreciate that they work together to make consistent language from building to building. Because I know that caused a lot of hardship in years past, so thank you for that.
Thank you, any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thanks, Mrs. Stratton. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports, Athletic Committee, Mr. Japina.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. I'll just start off by saying that not since the 1980s, when General Hospital was on television. Have we seen a bigger soap opera than what's going on right now between the governor of Pennsylvania and the PIA double A. Hopefully on Friday, we'll find out from the PIA double A that we will be able to start some fall competition at Exeter. If that does occur, I would also recommend that all extracurricular activities. Continue or commence with appropriate pandemic safety measures so we can offer our students opportunities to interact with each other. Through the numerous and various clubs and activities that are rituals. And actually, in many cases, the most memorable parts of a high school experience. While I absolutely support the administration's all-virtual option for the first nine weeks. I'm convinced we need to lead the way in offering our students opportunities to interact with their peers during these stressful and unprecedented times. None of these settings are without risks, and all parties are fully aware that any significant outbreak would curtail any such activities. In athletics, we have a longstanding team physician, Dr. Paul Maher. Who's highly experienced in family medicine and whose expertise we have trusted for many years as he has served in that capacity. We also have a bevy of qualified school nurses to draw on. I'm sure with all these medical resources, along with hypervigilant coaches, committed parents and participants. Each will do all they can to ensure that our settings are safe. It's my sense that as a school district, we have a role in supporting the psychosocial development. Along with the academic development of our students. And by supporting all extracurricular activities. We, we are offering safe settings for our students to interact with their coaches, their advisors, and with each other. I applaud all the efforts to keep things safe to date, and I implore all participants. In every activity to follow the comprehensive, safe play processes that the athletic director, Mr. Legath. Has created, including practicing masking and social distancing when they're away from these activities. By doing all of these things, by following these plans. It maximizes the chance that we'll actually have a successful fall sports season. And all of our students can be involved in some sort of an activity over the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Japina. I just had one question about fall, about sports and, and safety. And I'm, I'm wondering whether there's any difference that we see. In sports that we would call contact sports versus non-contact sports, and whether we might approach them any differently in the event that we did see. Any problems that might be coming up related to COVID. I mean, certainly, I would think contact sports offer a greater likelihood that. The, the virus would be transmitted from student to student. But Mike, I didn't know if that, from your viewpoint, as someone who works within the medical profession. Whether you have a sense, based upon the folks that you've spoken to, whether there's any continuum of, of safety among all the various sports that we have?
Well, I think if we look at our experience that we've had so far, granted, we've been practicing masking, we've been practicing social distancing. I mean, there's no doubt that if you're getting into contact, that there's a, there's a possibility that we are going to. Have transference if somebody comes onto the field in the first place with the, with the virus. And I think that's what's so critical, is that we ensure that we're taking all precautions ahead of time. To ensure that somebody is at least not symptomatic when they come on to the field. There's still, still some debate around asymptomatic spreading of the disease, but I mean, clearly, there's a risk. And so my basic feeling is this. We give it a shot. And if it turns out that. Something occurs, then we're done, and I think the athletes know that, I think the parents know that. So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's clearly a risk if people are interacting with each other, there's no doubt about that.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion on the Athletic Committee topic? Thanks, Mr. Japina. We're going to move on to item 11, Business Functions Committee, Mr. Aaron.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. The first thing I just want to touch on was we had a joint or merged meeting with a, a facilities committee this evening. I think John and I, or Mr. Fidler and I are going to talk about how to, if, or if to continue that in the future. I thought that there was a lot of value in that, so I just wanted to say thank you to him. Thank you, John. And the other thing I wanted to touch on was that we were able to successfully hire an incoming business administrator. This past meeting, and I, I was having some connectivity issues. So I'm very excited to bother him as much as I bothered Ann. And I'll probably have some more heartfelt comments at the September meeting for Ann and for the, the role that she's played here for many years. But I just wanted to say thank you in anticipation for that, and I hope that you have a lot of plans to make good on soon.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. I will move, we'll move on to Curriculum Committee, Dr. McLendon.
Curriculum Committee met on August 4th. During, in that meeting, Dr. Winters and Dr. Miners went over the virtual plan. It, it is a very thorough and comprehensive plan, they're, you know, very well thought out. They have addressed every concern that you can imagine, and all of the things that were. Were not really that well done in the spring have been addressed, and I think, I'm, I'm really pleased, I think they did an extraordinary job. I want to thank all of the, you know, team administrators and everyone who got together to come up with this plan. It's, you know, of course, posted on, on the district webpage, I think it's about 27 pages. But if you haven't had a chance to look that over, it is very comprehensive, and I think that. I'm really pleased with that, I think that, you know, parents are going to be as well when they see what a big improvement it is over what. The virtual learning was in the spring. So that was really the whole entire meeting. I don't know if Dr. Winters or Dr. Miners has anything, you know, to add?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, it was a, it was a absolutely 100% collaborative team effort. You know, terrific administrators, teachers, everybody working together to, you know, get, get a plan in place that, that we really feel good about educating students in the best way we know how, so. It, it was, it was just a wonderful process that, that really brought all the expertise of the administrative team together, and. We look forward to implementing it and, and working with our families, and. One thing that I will mention kind of related to that is Dr. Minor and I have started a. Virtual learning parent advisory subgroup that is composed of some moms and dads in the community that. Are going to meet with Dr. Minor and I probably monthly, just to kind of give us feedback on how they see things going, and. We've gotten some really good suggestions already from folks on that team that we're able to kind of implement and share with our administrators, and I think it's going to be a really, really good tool. For us to continue to engage with the community as we move forward. We've also asked Dr. Flam and Mr. Campbell to get, to get a group of students together that we can also engage with on their experiences learners, so. We feel really good about being able to get feedback and let this, let this plan to evolve and, and develop, you know, according to needs.
Thank you, Dr. Winters. And so that, so that was about it, and then our next meeting is September 8th. So that's my report.
Okay, great, thanks, Dr. McLendon. We're going to move on to item 13, Facilities Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Oh, we had a very detailed report from the architect at AEM, which is the. The firm doing the architecture for the transportation center proposed for the Awatton Creek site. And I'm, this, this is all new to me, but I'm thinking, Dave, that the next logical step would be to. Invite Mr. Leinbach back for the. The workshop meeting next month, and to have him report to the entire board. And that we then schedule a vote to proceed at the voting meeting. Now, proceed on what, you might ask? The, the next, the next major milestone in this process is to approach Exeter Township. Zoning Hearing Board for a variance so that we can then proceed with the project itself. So that would be my suggestion, Dave, I don't know if you have any, anything you'd like to add or any suggestions?
No, I think it's a good point, at some point, the, the board has to. Weigh in on the, I think, the plan. And the proposed costs. I mean, obviously, all this is contingent upon approval by the zoning hearing board. That variance that would be required for. upon approval by the zoning hearing board, that variance that would be required for for construction on on the site. But in the event that, you know, it is approved, and that is a process that takes a considerable amount of time, three to five months from when I could I could read from, you know, the presentation this evening.
Yep, that's what he said.
Yeah. So I mean, it's going to take a while, but I mean, even to get to that stage, I think we have to have a pretty good sense that the board is is comfortable moving forward with the project as it's designed and the and the associated costs, and how we're we're planning on on paying for those for the for the facility. So I think it's a great plan. I I think it's not a bad idea, Mr. Fiddler, to to kind of bring Mr. Lineback back in at the workshop meeting. It's a good time for discussion. Unless anybody has any objections to that, I I think that's a, I think it's a very reasonable recommendation.
Okay. I think it'd be also a good idea to get the plan to the board members in advance of his presentation, so that everyone has a chance to at least go through it once before hearing him, so that I think that'll make for a more fruitful discussion after better questions after he makes his presentation.
It was sent to the the board, I think, today by Ann.
Oh, okay, great. Great. I would just like to echo Hunter's comments about the meeting. It was a first a first go at a joint meeting, and I thought it went well. And I think it sets sets precedent for the future. And so I guess our next meeting would be just before the voting meeting. Is that correct, Hunter? Yeah, okay. All right. So that's that's really my report. And we look forward to the discussion and presentation by Mr. Lineback at the workshop meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Fiddler. We're going to move on to item 14, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
I don't have a report.
Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. Policy Committee, no report? Student Functions Committee, Mrs. Stratton?
Fortunately, no reports.
Thank you. Technology Committee, Mr. Miller?
I have nothing to report. Just once again, thanks, Joe Wayne, Calamena. Those guys are amazing. So they're doing a great job.
I can that. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Herring.
Thanks, Dave. ECF has made the difficult decision to cancel our annual golf tournament due to COVID-19. We're contacting donors to help us fund a few items we'd like to support for the district, which include portable Wi-Fi spots, internet for needy families, books for distribution at student food pickup delivery, and full district access to learning ally. If anyone would like to support us in this initiative, please forward your donation to ECEF at the Loush Building. On Monday, ECEF gave the district a check for $1,816.96 for four user licenses for the unique learning program. And we'd like to thank the following donors that quickly jumped behind the project. John Fusatis with Burke's Hometown Heroes, Joe Staub and family, the Evans family, Roether family, and the Cook family. ECEF would like to thank outgoing board members Jeff Bukowski and Laura B. and Cohn for their service to the to our board. We're eternally grateful. And that's it. Thank you.
Dr. Herring and Dr. Hamburger, if I could just add one thing very, very briefly, I just want to also just say a thank you to ECEF. At the start of the year, in being in those board meetings, they have really committed to say to the district, you know, we want some projects, we want to help support things to start the year out that, you know, will help students. What are your needs in the midst of learning in a pandemic? Let us know what they are, and we'll work with you. And, you know, under Amy's leadership and the entire board, they've just been wonderful to, you know, find ways to fund things that we need funded. And every project that we mentioned to them, they're always looking for a way to see how they can support it. So I just wanted to add to Dr. Herring's report and just kind of publicly thank ECEF, because it's been their 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 support of what we're trying to do here early in the year has been wonderful.
Thanks for those comments, Patrick. And, you know, not every not every community or school district has an education foundation, and and especially, they don't have a an executive director, someone like Amy Lutz, who's been able to really, you know, keep the process vibrant and engaged and connected to the school district in such a positive way. So they've been a real asset to our district, and we don't we don't thank them enough. And thanks for thanks for, you know, bringing up, you know, some of those those statements about about how they function, because they've just been, they're a real jewel, you know, in our in our community. We're going to move on to Burke's Tech Center, Dr. McLendon.
BCTC, we met on August 5. It was a hybrid meeting at the East Campus and also Zoom. They, at that meeting, we approved the emergency instructional plan and the health and safety plan for the 2020-2021 school year. As of that date, August 4, the BCTC was planning to do a full in-person. They also had presented a hybrid model. And what Dr. Krip, you know, talked about was, in the spring, the students were getting a lot of theory, because they could not do their hands-on. And as you know, that's, you know, technical school, that is a lot of hands-on. And so they're going to have students return, because they can't really do that at home, and they need to be, you know, under the supervision of teachers for safety reasons, as well as having the equipment there. He, they talked about a lot of safety measures that they have that, I don't know if you ever visited there, but the shop areas are very big, students are spread out. They're going to, if they can utilize, you know, anything they can do outs outside, they're going to do that. But it's really essential that students are able to do the hands-on, because that's a big part of the technical program. And also, they there are 16 Burke's County schools that feed into the BCTC. So as of August 4, there were only two that were going completely virtual. That has changed, I know, since then. And also, the student-built house was sold. There is settlement will be on September 10. And the other additional information is in the JRC briefs that were emailed to you. Next meeting is September 23 at the West Campus. That's it.
Dr. Hamburger, may I add to Dr. McLendon's?
Yeah, sure.
About BCTC. Thank you. We did the head of the heads of BCTC met with the county superintendents today, as Dr. McLendon mentioned, to be changeover in the county is occurring. School districts are opting to go virtual. Other districts, at this point, I believe, Ole, Antietam, Redding, and Exeter are fully virtual, and other schools have begun to look at hybrid models as well as virtual. So BCTC is working hard to constantly evolve and change, as challenging as we all have it as individual schools. As Dr. McLendon mentioned, you know, they're managing 16 schools. Of course, Redding isn't one of them, they have a separate technical center. But they are really trying, as Dr. McLendon mentioned, hard to have opportunities because of the hands-on nature of their work. That is literally evolving as we speak. This week, they've asked the schools to report participation in BCTC. It is Exeter's intention to send our students who wish to go to provide busing, and we'll continue to work with BCTC. And we appreciate Dr. McLendon's representation of our school on their board as they navigate such a difficult time.
Thank you, Dr. Minor.
Anything else, Dr. McLendon?
No, no, that's all.
Okay, conclude your report. Thank you. Burke's County Intermediate Unit, Board of Directors will be meeting this Thursday. I just want to say a few things about the BCIU during this COVID crisis. We found that BCIU has been especially helpful in coordinating the efforts of all the county superintendents and and coordinating jobalike meetings of other administrative groups, you know, throughout, you know, the months since the onset of the of the closures and the virus. And it's it's been an amazing and a very important service, and I want to commend, you know, Dr. Joe Hackman and and her team at BCIU for the tremendous work that they do to to really help pull everything together and coordinate, you know, the the procedure, disseminate information, and to share, you know, opportunities for dialogue and discussion among all school districts to help make these very difficult decisions. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Fiddler.
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Japina.
Dr. Hamburger, I think you addressed one of the issues with the park. And I know that we were also working on with Mr. Aaron's to get a meeting with the new borough, the Exeter Borough manager and Dr. Minor, but I'm not sure if that's been set up yet. I know I know efforts were being made, and it really wasn't the top priority, but we are looking to get those two together. So thanks, Hunter, for that leadership.
That, Mr. Japina, that is on my calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Japina. Before we consider a motion for adjourn adjourning, I I do want to report that the board had an executive session this past Saturday, August 15, for for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. Also, before adjournment, are there any board members who would like to be heard at this time? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. We're we're. Okay.
We need a session.
Second, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, I think we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. All the folks who are on the line, the public comments. We welcome public comments and hope they continue in the future, and wish everybody a great night, safe, a safe week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Night, everyone.